In the name of Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Lord, we thank you for another opportunity to arise today. We thank you for an opportunity to, to, to show your light and, and, and do your deeds in this world. We ask you to give us strength, fortitude, um, touch those around us and possibly impact all those we can in our lives. So we'll say, uh, in every need, let me come to thee with humble trust, saying, Jesus, help me. In all my doubts, perplexities and temptations, Jesus, help me. In hours of loneliness, weariness and trials, Jesus, help me. When my heart is cast down by failure, that's seeing no good, come from my efforts, Jesus, help me. When others fail me and thy grace alone can assist me, Jesus, help me. When I throw myself on thy tender love as father and savior, Jesus, help me. When I feel impatient and cross my irritants, Jesus, help me. When sickness and loneliness overcome, Jesus, help me. And we'll end this prayer there in our Father.
Father, who art in heaven. Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. In his kingdom, power and glory forever and ever.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to the meeting. Sit back, relax, hold on for the ride. Uh, Mr. Mickellegas, first guest.
Hey, everybody, council. Uh, first of all, thanks for having us. We'll take up very much of your time. I know you've got a busy agenda. Um, as you said, I'm Mickellegas. I'm the CCA Executive Director for the state. And we have been lucky enough to be supported by some pretty strong sponsors to offer a free kids fishing rodeo from Memorial Day to Labor Day. I think it's the first time that it's ever happened and we are super stoked about it. Um, we don't need anything from the city. I gave y'all a flyer. Um, what I would like is if your recreation department could tag it. Um, the whole, the whole point of this fishing rodeo is to get kids and families out to fish. Get them off their computers and out of the house over the summer. It's gonna start the Saturday of Memorial Day. It's gonna end the Monday of Labor Day. Um, it's saltwater, south of I-ten in Mississippi waters. We're going to give about forty thousand dollars in prizes to the winning kids and that's the place prize. Your first, second, and third for each category and each individual. We've got a, um, for each child angler that catches a, uh, one of each species, we're going to put in for a special wrap when they will get a big prize. And we also have for each child that gets a video of them catching a release, sends us a video. We're going to give a very big prize at the end for that. So we're gonna draw it. It's all about, like I said, families getting things back, putting kids, uh, with fishing poles. Um, these events coincide with our casting for conservation and our, uh, normal fishing pole giveaway. Sportsman's Club, we helped them out. We did, we did a couple of events in Bay St. Louis last year. The idea there is to give each kid a fishing pole to make sure they have the tools to fish. Um, again, um, Mississippi waters, south of I-ten, ages three to fifteen. Uh, so no license needed, no reason, and they can catch fish anywhere. Um, we've talked to Dwayne at the, uh, at the harbor, Mr. Bob at Dave Marina here in Bay St. Louis. Those will be our two way stations. We're gonna provide the scales and we're gonna provide the, the, uh, publicity for them. Um, we're gonna put a little page on our website so that people know when they're open, their hours of operation. Um, the biggest question we've had is what if a kid catches a fish and not throw it on ice? Put it at the next step? You know, we, the, the, the get, big idea is to make this easy. You look at the back, set rules are pretty, pretty simple, um, easy to understand. If we have a tie, first kid that caught and then the first kid that registered. Then if you go a little bit step further, if you have a child that wins more than one event, we're gonna call in a week before the event, the banquet. And we're gonna tell them, hey, you can only win one. Which one do you want to be the king? So trying to make sure that we give a hundred and three different first, but second, third place prizes. Um, like I said, a hundred, about four hundred thou- forty thousand in prizes, probably about another ten grand indoor prizes. Um, we've had some local sponsors that have, that have been well and we're gonna, we're gonna blast all that out. The other thing is the banquet is gonna be held September twenty-first. We're hoping to use Rice Pavilion in Gulfport. It's the only place we think is big enough to hold the amount of children that we're hoping to serve. Um, we also have, uh, the DMR cooking team that I believe is gonna cook for us that, that day. So it's, it's gonna be a really good event. Uh, any of your constituents have it? Churches, do you wanna get this flyer out? If there's a group, a youth group that you need me to go talk to so that we can make sure. Like I said, the idea is to get as many fishing poles in hand as we possibly can.
Any questions?
No, sir. Sounds good.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Do y'all have this as a, like a JPG or PDF that we can attach and put it on our website?
I'll consider it. It is, and, um, believe it or not, we actually have somebody that donated money for publicity to be able to, to blast it out. So again, you know, we're hoping between five and eight hundred children.
That'd be awesome.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Any agenda amendments needed? Anything that need to be added? I agree so did. Y'all good?
Yeah, the only thing I sent out earlier to the council and Caitlin was able to add it was under the mayor's report B. Was dealing with, uh, the AC.
Right, okay.
For the fire department.
Alright.
But it's already on your agenda.
Yes, thank you. Alright, next thing, um, plan and zoning application, uh, motion to follow plan and zoning recommendation, approved application for a five, variance of five foot to the front yard submitted by Carlton and Andrea Main, located one-one-one-six-zero Manhattan Street, parcel one-three-five-M dash zero dash three-nine dash one-two-five dot zero-zero-zero and one-three-five-M dash zero dash three-nine dash one-two-four dot zero-zero-zero. Is approved five zeros and want to hear talk in favor of this application? Ben Fatty?
I'm Mark Benfatty, five thirteen Dunbar Court. Um, we got a hundred-foot lot, hundred-foot by a hundred-foot. And we got, um, twelve-foot setback on the, um, the tiebacks on the bulkhead. And the customers building this beautiful home, but they think they may wanna put a pool in the future. So we're trying to get them fifteen feet from the back of the house to the, um, tiebacks of the bulkhead. So that was the only reason we're trying to, you know, slide five feet just to give us some wiggle room later on to put a pool.
Okay, good. Um, anybody in opposition to this application? Was approved five zero by plan and zoning?
Motion. Motion to follow PNZ's recommendation and approve.
Motion Mr. Salvo?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hoffman. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote the motion.
Yeah, a couple of discussion points. Um, Mr. Benfatty, is there no way to, to do this? So, so you're looking at future use, right? So a pool in the front potentially? That's why you're asking for the five-foot?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's no way to achieve this without looking at that variance on the five feet? Cause it looks like, I know based on the administration's recommendation, I think they were looking at, there's no hardship presented and the, the lot is oversized. So is there an actual need for it? And then is there a way to achieve it without getting the five-foot variance?
Um, not at this point. The, the plans are already drawn. The customer's set on that, that footprint of the house. And it's only a hundred-foot deep lot, which is really, you know, by the time you take out forty-five feet, it didn't leave us a whole bunch of room to draw the plan. So it's already kinda in motion and it just came up in the last minute. And, uh, we're just trying to leave us enough room for a pool.
I mean, it could be set all we want, but if it's not, you know, if you need a variance, there, there's gonna be changes. And if there's no hardship, I mean, I'd agree with the administration on this recommendation unless that's changed. Mayor, has that changed recommendation on this?
I think that's what they had talked about. I, I don't know. I don't know if they knew about the tiebacks coming, coming out, you know, to where that was. It, you know, initially it was said, you know, just for a pool to go in and we thought the same thing. They still had room or to the side or something. But with the tiebacks coming back that far, I don't know how far and all.
Usually it's ten to fifteen feet. I think we had twelve feet. So that's kinda eaten up a little bit more the yard. So it's just causing a little bit of a problem.
Yep. Okay, any more discussion? Vote the motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Neat.
Aye, motion passes three to one.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Next application, motion to deny the application for variance of two foot to the side yard submitted by Michael Martin, located three-thirty-nine State Street, parcel one-four-nine-E dash zero dash two-nine dash two-sixty-eight dot zero-zero-zero. Anybody here speak on this application? Anybody speak against the application? Yes, ma'am, please come forward, identify yourself for the record.
I'm Joanne Noel. I am, uh, his next door neighbor. And, uh, I, my yard is not a big yard. Um, and, um, I have a small dog and we spent a lot of time back there. My house is elevated three steps. His house is on a slab. And, um, my thing is I, I just don't wanna face. Can you imagine what three feet is gonna look like with the garage right there? To me, it's just, I just don't wanna do it. I just don't wanna do it if, you know, uh, that's just me.
Okay, thank you.
I'm her dog. I'm gonna explain a little better of what she's trying to say.
Identify yourself.
Oh, Kristy Coolon. I'm her dog. Uh, what she's trying to say is like when you are standing in her yard, pulling it closer is gonna make it look taller. And when you're standing on, like when she walks outside, you can literally see over the fence because the yard, the house tall. So that's really what her concern, that the closer you get, taller it's gonna be.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion? Yeah, plan and zoning, um, actually the owner on the telephone, um, they did, just really did not follow along with his plan the way he was talking about why they had to move the shed over. Um, said it was encroaching on his back patio. Um, and I think then end of the day, plan and zoning did not feel that there was an encroachment that needed a variance. Um, therefore they did make a motion to deny.
I think that's what the city's recommendation was initially as well, right?
Okay.
Correct.
So I'll make a motion to follow planning and zoning's recommendation, recommendation and deny the application for variance.
Motion, Mr. Hoffman.
Second.
Second, Mr. Lewis. Discussion, all in favor, vote the motion.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes four zero to deny. I motion follow, uh, plan and zoning recommendation, approve application for amendment to the zoning map submitted by JPC Development, located four-seven Highway ninety, parcel one-three-seven-A dash zero dash forty-five dash one-four-zero dot zero-zero, was approved five zero. Got anything, anybody, talk about anything with Mr. Kanishi? Application.
I can, Jason Kanishi, seven-twenty-five Old Spanish Trail and four-oh-seven Highway ninety. I don't have anything to add other than I'm seeking a, a map amendment for that part.
Yeah, so the Jason property is highway commercial. That's the big property behind Domino's.
All the way down.
All the way back to the front of the, yeah, almost, well, to the front of, to the edge of the apartment complex is where that commercial goes. And, uh, so this runs basically parallel, same amount, um, back that way. Um, so, um, there was really no, there's nobody at the plan zone. I was a little confused about what it was beginning with. I saw the maps.
Squared it up.
It is, but yeah, it does. There's no really change, um, in existing area that would be a detriment or zoning.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I look at when you're going from residential to commercial, it does create, there's zero setbacks. So I go lot line to lot line. I guess that'd be the only concern, but I mean, most of this area is commercial.
Right.
Um, but, yeah, that, that's my only concern is going to residential commercials that you can build lot line to lot line.
Right. Yeah, I pulled up the maps and kinda tried to lay them together and it, to me, it's minimal impact, um, for this change. Um, anybody speak in opposition to this? Alright, motion?
Motion. Motion for PNZ's recommendation and approve.
Motion, Mr. Salvo?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hoffman. Any more discussion? Vote the motion.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes four zero.
Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Mayor?
Alright. First thing we have, you know, uh, I think it was the last meeting, we had, uh, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar bond set for the Shields Borough subdivision. Um, part of that was, you know, you still had to come back in and pave and everything in there. Since then, they've come back in and have paved everything in there. And they would like to see the bond reduced. And, and we were talking with them and everything, I think it came out like a fifty-thousand-dollar bond, which would cover any major costs in, in there. But it would also extend our warranty from two years to three years. We would get an extra year warranty or anything in there as well. Um, again, it's something, we're trying to put together something for future projects that would define what, what the bond needs to be. We have done research all up and down the coast. Uh, some's five percent, some's ten percent, some's, uh, so much a lot. Uh, different thing, I think the Ibeville you, is.
Eight hundred a lot?
Yeah, eight hundred a lot, you know, things like that. So it's, it's less than what we're, we're looking at with this bond. And I think they're looking to move forward with the project and everything, you know, going on. But again, I think, you know, everybody feels like, you know, fifty thousand would cover any major mishap, you know, whether pipe blows out, whatever, and washes out the road and everything. I think, you know, so.
So the main concern, I think at last meeting we discussed, was no guarantee on the, the asphalt and the top layer and the overlayment on that. So we have that, that has been solidified.
Been complete.
Complete.
Yes, yes.
Um. They came, did the two coats on that, whatever, and everything's finished in there as far as the roads go.
Jason, do you have any recommendations on this? Cause I ended up with, kinda following your recommendation last.
Yeah, like, uh, Kyle said, the paving was kind of our main concern. So now that that's been addressed, I think extending it another year gives us, um, some more protection. So I would recommend, um, going with the fifty-thousand-dollar bond for the three-year period.
Alright, yeah, so I'm a, I'm a numbers guy, right? Let's talk about the economics on this. Um, one percent bond, um, so your bond's one to four percent, right? So depends on your, your bonding cap- capacity. Um, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar bond at one percent is two-hundred-and-fi- twenty-five-hundred dollars. If I go eight-hundred dollars a lot, that's thirty-three thousand dollars for the same bond. The developer has an economic, if he only makes ten percent per house, um, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, it's a million dollars profit that the developer makes. Um, we have a major blowout in sewer water. Um, city's on a hook to fix that, right? So who pays for it? The developer gets his million dollars, taxpayers get to fix it. Right?
They're, they're responsible still for it.
Up, up to three years.
Yeah, anytime after that.
We're, we're responsible.
Yeah, they're giving a, and the bond, I mean, the bond was good for the same time too.
So if we have a major blowout for three years, they're bonded up to fifty thousand, right? How, how mu- how much the whole old main street cost at that time?
Four million.
Yeah, it was significant. And I'm just questioning, right? Is this the right thing to do for a little bit of money?
This is, there's your warranty and then your bond. The bond basically just covers that they're not going to show back up.
Finish it.
So, I mean, you have to think about this in terms of if this was a development that the, the city did. If it was our own infrastructure project, you don't have, and so the city is monitored, the city has been involved in, um, I guess, construction and approvals all the way through. So it's the same thing that if it was this, our, our own project. I mean, if a contractor finishes it and they, we take substantial completion and we walk away, I mean, we don't have anything, we don't, yeah, it's, it's, it's ours. We only have essentially the same thing, a warranty to make sure that, you know, they, they do what they, they can do. And also, I, I know the numbers, but I'm not, I think you might be thinking more about performance bond numbers. And my understanding is, are the, the cost of these, um, performance bonds, like this that were, are maintenance bonds are higher than, yes, they're not.
Cause we're looking for performance bonds, first it was told was a performance bond.
Yeah, no, this is a maintenance bond, so it's a little different than what we see every day in our.
Yeah, cause we're just looking at thirty-eight-hundred dollars for a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollar bond.
We deal with bid bonds and performance bonds.
Right.
This is a maintenance bond.
And this is, this is right about a ten percent of the, you know, the cost of the whole entire project.
Okay, and I wasn't, I wasn't sure what the total economic outlay of the project was.
I think, I think the project is like Jason five-hundred-and-fifty thousand somewhere in there, so you know, we're right.
Okay, alright, that's fine.
But, you know, one, again, one of the good things, we got an extra year warranty out of, out of it as well.
Do we have a timeline of when, I mean, so when this overlay will be done and then when the development of that other phase?
Overlay is done.
Okay, so I mean, so we're looking at the development phase two. I mean, there's still a lot to be done on that, that development. So we know there's gonna be a lot of wear and tear. Do we, I, I wanna make sure the timeline, that we're within still that three-years timeframe? Cause you're gonna have some huge truck, big trucks coming in, a lot of wear and tear on that road to where that covers, yeah. So do we have?
Yeah, it, it, it starts from whenever everything's signed over and everything.
So once we approve it, it starts today?
Yes. And then, and then it'll be for three years from there on, you know, the warranty and all on the road and everything in there.
And my guess would be development and sellout and buildout would determine the next phase would be.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, that's my concern. If it, if it takes two, two and a half, three years to do all that and we're, we've got nothing, we've got no recourse and you've got all those trucks coming in and.
Yeah.
Well, that's either way, if I'm not mistaken, Heather might be able to clear this up. But if, if we hold off, if we'd have held off on the paving, then it's still a, was a two-year warranty from the time we take it.
I'm accepted.
Yeah, so the bond was only good for two years, whereas now it's three years. So hopefully, you know, if we're gonna have any trouble in there and all should occur with those, like you saying, you know, with the heavy equipment coming in, trucks and this and that and all, you know.
Alright, I'm good. The rec, the, um, city engineering administration feels that that's significant, uh, enough on, whatever that word was. It left me. Um.
Efficient?
Efficient.
Efficient, that's what it was. Um, I'm okay with that. Um, any, any more discussion around that?
No, sir.
Motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Mr. Salvo?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hoffman. I mean, more discussion, other discussion I'd like is administration, you said you're working on a, a bond fee schedule or whatever? So we'll have.
For any future projects like this.
Yeah, I just don't know what, I guess we've never really looked at that to understand.
The subdivision regulations just cite a maintenance bond.
It doesn't say how you calculate it. So we're trying to look at up and down the coast, what are the kind of standard around the coast?
Gotta have someplace.
That people are doing. So it's, it's an easy formula before a developer goes and knows, it's, this is how you calculate it.
Right, okay.
This is what's expected.
And they'll know their front and cost.
Yeah, they'll know the cost and all that.
Okay, good deal. Alright, vote the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four zero. Next item was the air conditioning header for the.
Yeah, what this is, you know, we've been having trouble probably since day one with air conditioning. At the, um, fire station one, it's got the underground loop, is my understanding. Even one of the contractors that put in the bid was working there at the time, talked about how it was compromised. The underground piping was compromised at the time of installation. So what we're looking at is, is putting a, a chiller in, well, not a chiller, uh, cooling tower in, above ground, you know, over on the backside, on the ground, not on the building, but on the ground. Be an all stainless unit and everything, tying the existing pipes and everything we got, um, and, and keep the same inner system and all throughout. And, you know, it, it did come back less than what was expected, uh, at low bid, I think it was two-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand. I think it was.
Too close.
And, and all, and again, the lead time on this is what's so far out. We're talking about still, even if we get it approved and, and get everything out, we're still talking about an August timeline frame somewheres in there. And, you know, last year was pretty bad. I think just about all the air conditions in the, uh, bunk rooms and all upstairs, none of them had worked. Um, it was pretty miserable in there for them guys. And so this year, we're also looking at getting some prices in to bring in a portable unit that will set up and tie into our existing lines to use that system and all. And, and still waiting on prices for that, you know, so. One of the things is, again, is, is being able to move as quickly as we can to, to try to get everything ordered because of the lead time for the unit itself. So I know it was late and everything getting, they've also, you know, they came back with, you know, an alternative of some new units, three mini units or something they use out in Texas at the school that just started using them that would hook up to our system instead of one big compressor and everything, you know, so. But this is a, pretty much a bulletproof, not a lot on it, a pump, a motor, and that's it, you know. It, it's not like all electronics and everything get back where we was at, you know, with these other three units and all. Also looked at taking, you know, doing away with the system we have and going with, you know, central units throughout the place, but to pull everything out, to get into the duct works and all that, we're probably looking at more money for that than what we all, you know, for this, you know, fix right here.
And I know this came up last time we discussed this, there's no, I'm, I'm by no means gonna pretend to be an HVAC expert.
Right.
But there's no way to just convert this simplic- I mean, cause I don't think there's any other building probably in the city that has this kind of system, right? So is there no way to just get some high tonnage units and convert this? And, and, I mean, it would be fractious.
We, we talked about that, but, but go in and take all this out and then come back in and rewire everything, drains each, cause each one of these rooms has its own thermostat and its own little mini unit up in the ceiling.
Which is like PTACs, I mean, it, but.
Right.
An elaborate version that, that costs very highly to fix.
But, but again, you know, the, this is what's been recommended, you know, and, and even when people came in looking at the system, they're, you know, talking with their, their recommendation was to, you know, fix what you have and, and, but this is the way to go with the cooling tower and all and get rid of the underground that, you know, it's more cost efficient and everything, getting it done and, and going in and replacing everything with, you know, the other way.
Now, this will get us whole, it won't be, we need ten other pro- individual room units replaced once we get this system in for another fifty thousand or nothing or what?
We hope not. We, we just, you know, we spent forty and got everything working.
Yeah.
And was hoping that might solve the problem, but there's no guarantee on that anywhere.
That's my fear, if we put three-hundred thousand out and then another hundred to fix it, ten rooms and maybe we should, like Kyle says, wish to a simple system for four-hundred thousand to be done.
We talked about it, but, but not, we, we didn't find one, one of the engineers with any of the other ones that put bids in for this to even wanna touch that because of the work and everything that has to be done.
Cause this is pretty much just gonna give it the chill, water it needs to, get the cooling and everything else. We're still independent of this outside of this three-hundred thousand.
Water gets hot and.
Yeah.
You know, well, one thing, I think if you look at our utility bills over there, we're spending.
A load of money for water.
Twenty-seven-hundred, three-thousand dollars a month trying to use utility water to, that's draining to try to just use the kid it to chill down a little bit and all. You know, that's gonna go way back to more of a normal billing cycle and everything and I, as well, you know, so.
Where are we getting the funds?
We, we'd agreed we took it out, the rest of the bond money.
Bond, some of the bond money.
Bond fund.
When they did the advertisement, that's where y'all.
Get about a fifteen-ton temporary unit, about twenty-one-hundred dollars a month from a Greco. Mayor, if you need to contact on that. I have to rent them every summer, so.
Yeah, well, I think this is what they're looking at is, how much you said?
Twenty-one-hundred dollars for fifteen-ton?
I think you said, tell them up temporary for the summer.
Yeah.
Temporary hookup.
We're talking, yeah, I think they're looking at.
The engineer's gonna bring us recommendations for that, that they can tie in.
I think he's talking about a cooling tower on, on wheels to hook up.
Yeah, I just did not, I guess.
Yeah, we're bringing, we gotta bring that back whenever we get all that information.
Really not that bad. I mean, three months probably need it.
Last year was anyways in the mid-nineties on up and down, you know.
Yeah, miserable.
Come late, yeah, it was.
That's miserable. Can't expect the guys to perform like that.
Alright, um, any discussion, any more discussion on that? So a little bitter, bitter recommended by engineering companies, DMP Incorporated, two-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand-one-hundred dollars. They had a new cooling tower for fire station number one.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion, Salvo?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hoffman. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes four zero.
Thank y'all. And they do too.
Yes, we'll get that done. Council business, um, motion to approve, uh, proposal for Ryan Plan and Design to write new zoning orders for City Bay St. Louis, amount of a hundred and one-thousand-five-hundred dollars. Um, it's got a sc- detailed scope of work on it and it also ties in with the new comprehensive plan.
Correct.
See number six on all those, those, number six is kinda tied back into the zoning ordinance redo, rewrite. Read through the proposal, it's a lot of gibberish, um, quite honestly.
Is it, is there a reason why they, I, you know, I'd love to hear from Orion to come and speak to what, what they found in the comprehensive plan that would necessitate a rezoning, we all know there's some work to do, but, I mean, I'd love to hear from them. I mean, is there a reason why they didn't wanna come in or come and?
I mean, no, I asked purposely, now that we've got the comprehensive plan in draft form, it's being prepared for P and Z. So instead of delaying another basically three months while this process finishes up, we've had multiple public hearings, there've been feedback, positive comments on the, the various, you know, i- ideas and concepts that've come through that comprehensive plan. So this to me is, when I've asked, I say, can we, you know, are we in a position that we can start working, cause it's a law, a year long process and we know our comprehensive plan that was done, I'm sorry, the zoning that was done, I think two thousand and ten, has some flaws, it's got us some, some pickle at times. So to me, it's, let's start and let's get, you know, get working, this firm has obviously been around for a year with us, has met with y'all, met with P and Z, met with our residents, had advisory board, they know us. And now it starts saying, alright, how do we incorporate all of that into, um, our comprehensive plan into our zoning code and making changes? But again, this is a year long process, so there's gonna be more coming back.
Yeah, it's not like them going in, just drawing what they want, there's gonna be a lot of feedback from council, you know, the input from the every, the citizens and everything as well, you know.
Well, it doesn't necessarily mean that zones will change, so zoning ordinance, the document itself should be a living, breathing document. To my knowledge, we don't even have a word version of the thing, so part of this too is taking what's happened over the last ten years and making sure all of that is incorporated. Your definitions and your zoning ordinances a lot of times do not match up, um, there's some words that are defined that's never even used in the document. So, so Kyle, this, this goes way past what your current zones may look like, I mean, the geographical, you know, R three may not change, but it's your whole ordinance overhaul as a whole that they would be looking at.
Yeah, and that's just, I mean, it's a big chunk of money and that's why, it's a hundred, you know, a hundred and one thousand, that's why I would like to kinda get specifics like that to where they're coming and say, we've identified this, this is what our recommendation, cause it, you know, yes, they've given us a draft. I mean, one of the things is one of the stakeholder, I mean, two of the stakeholders is real estate professionals and developers, not to knock real estate developers and, you know, real estate agents, developers, what do, what do they wanna do is develop and make it easier for them. So we know that there's been, from the citizens, uh, uh, you know, a, a push of, uh, preserving the quality of life first, you know, making it easier for developers to come in. So that's where it would've been nice to understand and hear what are some tangibles and specifics, I mean, we've got this, you know, again, we've got the draft, but it doesn't really go in detail.
Can we get them to come to the next meeting? We're not hurrying.
Check their schedule, yeah, but, so, again, I'm the one who made the request, so we, we budgeted a hundred thousand for FY twenty-four.
Yeah, let's.
And begin planning for that.
So we did, this is the budget amount?
Correct.
We did budget, yes, I thought we had some, let's get them back in and let's just kinda walk through what their, their detailed plan is.
And I'll also, and that's fine, but I'm gonna just tell you before they make a drive down here. They're not necessarily gonna have a plan yet because what's included in that is going through every line of your current ordinance and making recommendations for changes and doing a complete overhaul. So they know that feedback that's come from your comprehensive plan, but just remember that these are two separate documents, so all of that time, all of that effort, all of those recommendations. I don't, I don't really see them making those until they're engaged to, to do it, because that's a, a huge part of what, what you're hiring them to do.
Well, and it'd be good to hear, I mean, again, we've, we've spent a good bit of money for the comprehensive plan, this is another, this is a lot of money that we're about to spend on the zoning, so it, it would be good to hear from them. And we had the initial meeting with them, they've done a lot via Zoom, I don't know how much, you know, first, the first couple meetings was in person, but a lot's been Zoomed, so, I mean, I think getting back and really getting back with the council, I don't know when the last time was, when we had somebody that was actually here speaking, you know, so. I mean, I would just like to hear overall concepts, what they've done in other areas, to piggyback, they did it in Diamond Head, like to hear what their results.
I mean, again, they're going through the zoning, fin- the final draft of their zoning right now.
Yeah.
And I'm actually, I'm reading it just cause out of my own curiosity and see what does the new zoning kinda look like.
We'd love to hear what they're. Yeah, and, and what they've found in other municipalities.
And it's a complete hundred eighty degree, you know, change.
Is this, and it's.
The language of it, it's a lot simpler to read and digest.
So, and that.
But I'm asking, I mean, that, that's a big new for me, that's saying is, you know, just trying to.
Do we have any benchmarks on other costs from other firms, I mean, if these people doing Diamond Head, some sure the cost is pretty much the same, they're char- costing Diamond Head pretty much the same.
I think that was a little bit less, but they, ninety percent of Diamond Head didn't have to be re, you know, if you look at Diamond Head, it was a planned unit community. So all the residential is still R one, R two, R three, basically, whereas here, you've got, it's a complete different animal. So it might've been twenty-five percent less, I'm going off of my head from when I asked for a quote four years ago or three years ago.
So they've gotta have an idea, then, they've gotta have an understanding that it's not gonna be the same as Diamond Head, that it's gonna be more extensive and like to hear some of that.
Oh, yeah.
Could be a lot more.
Yeah, so, let's go over the broad overview of it and.
I think no problem. But I mean, they will be here, again, public hearing for the comprehensive plan that was getting advertised for May, you know, but I'll ask them if they can, if they're making a trip down for anything else.
Well, there's something we tie in with that as, as well.
Yeah.
Maybe save, save them a trip and just tie into that at the same time.
Good deal. Alright.
Just gotta get on the calendar.
Let's put that, take that off, we'll revisit that again. Um, council business, Mr. Hoffman?
I'll have everything.
Mr. Salvo?
I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, Mayor, we're, so I know Jason and then Ronnie have also worked on a, a study, I think, in, in Ward four and of course, I think Doug in your ward as well, in terms of the culverts. We had a, obviously a big downpour last week, so where are we staying, I think there were some, you know, we, they went out about a year or so ago, dug out what they could, especially, you know, in Seventh Street, Gladstone area, Gladstone, it's a little bit higher than Seventh Street, so there's some issues there, but they, there's identified, there's some collapsed culverts. So are we a little bit closer, where do we stand, we're trying to identify and, and look at replacing?
They're looking at some there, Highland, Esplanade area, um, some out Ward six and all, trying to put that together and trying to find somebody, we talked, talking with Jason, you know. See about going out and get a price from someone to come in and help us with this, you know.
So we're looking citywide?
I wouldn't say complete citywide.
No, no, but, but doing it all at once.
Yeah, you know, yeah, you know, like, we have a target area, we know it's Seventh Street on down through there off of, you know, that area down there, we know we got some culverts over there on Highland, Esplanade Ranch through there and all that needs some repairs, you know, some may have to be pulled or whatever. And we know we got some out there, road, crossing roads and everything out Ward six and in some of those areas, that's been, you know, jeopardized throughout the year and everything. So, so we're looking at just trying to get some pricing, finds a couple people, give us some pricing where we can go in and say, okay, we might take three or four streets, you know, here this month, three or four, you know, whatever, or that area and do them separate, but we're just trying to get some pricing on that and seeing exactly what all's needed.
And that could be pulled, I mean, that's, that's what road and bridge is there for, so I mean, we could look at bridge fund for that.
Correct. Yeah, we, we have some funds available, we, you know, for that, um, so, I know today Jason's talking about, um, Sienna Lane, we got the bid in for that, you know, we'll have something on that next meeting, so.
Do we have an ETA when we can get that wrapped up and trying to get some quotes out there?
God, I wish it was yesterday, no, but I'll find out from Ronnie.
Could be something, we try to get like a unit price on from contractors, cause this is gonna be an only one thing, just a one.
That's what we're trying to get. You know, one of the big things is replacing the drives and everything, you know, cause a lot of those over there on Seventh, you know, we have open ditches and everything, but we got the culverts.
Metal culverts under drives.
Rusting out and everything, and then even on the other end, when you get towards Turner Street down there, off, I think it's Bismarck down there, where I think a lot of the problem is, you have, I think it's three foot culverts on that end, and then Jason coming down the street and a long turner as well. And those may need up, upsizing, and then also maybe another crossover going there to get it out to the drainage.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of it's just too with development, the topography changing at where at Gladstone, I mean, it's probably two, three feet over, then it all flows down to Seventh, so if we don't have the appropriate sized culverts, then it's just, I mean, it's just.
And one, and one of the things we're also looking at, and they're putting together, one of the problems over there as well, you know, it flows through and all, come through, we checked the drainings through the ditches and all, you know, in between Turner and Bismarck through there and all. And, and water was flowing good through there, it, the water was up and everything, but we do believe we, we on the low side of Bush log, culvert side, yeah, Bush log. And, you know, to get the water out of there as well, and then when you, you know, when you get over to Longfellow there where it all runs out and then crosses over Penneyshire Lane, we could be on the, on the low side of that as well to allow, cause over there, what it does, it runs down the street over there and then eventually crosses over down that way. So we're also looking at maybe trying to upsize some, some of the, the street culverts that affects that area as well. But I assume, yeah, I'll, I'll get him to see where he's at on it, I think Christine's working on that, Jason, so.
And once again, we had the south wind right before that big rain too, that kept the, the bays out.
Yeah, we was on high tide and everything else, it, it seems like when we do get something.
Four inches of rain.
It was like when we had the, you know, the twelve inches or whatever, that night we was on a six foot tide, you know, and, and, and of course, our problem is every, every drainage we have leads to the water. So, you know, it doesn't help at all and that, and that's, I don't know what we do, but just increasing the size and if we could find property to have some holding ponds and all in them is a huge help as well, you know, so.
Have we looked, and this may not, may or may not fall into the zoning ordinance, but maybe something to discuss, you know, in the future though, o- obviously with a lot of the new builds transpiring, I mean, I, we know that there's, you know, anytime you take an area that's natural topography and then you build on it, you're probably looking at forty-five, fifty percent increased runoff. And then we've seen some, I mean, we've been in dialogue, Mayor, on a couple of that new builds that they never had issues with flooding, now they're building up and, and, yeah, it may only be eighteen inches and that's legal, but, but, you know, you're taking an area that probably, and I, and I, it gets into more of a neighbor to neighbor issue, but that was draining naturally and then you raise something up eighteen inches and then it's going onto that neighbor. And so I know the only recourse we have is to make sure to mitigate it from.
We find, what we find a lot of times is the last one to build is the, is the drainage pond in, in neighborhoods. And anytime that happens, you know, they're not, you know, they, some of them just bringing it up, you know, pretty much ground level, but again, they're all draining on their property.
Yeah.
And it goes back to, to me, I think everybody should have a foot or two on their property line that goes from their backyard to the street, which are street to the back, if that's where the ditch drainage is, and you should flow your own water.
Is there a way to, to do that before it gets to, cause right now, I know we can, you know, when it gets to the, we, certificate occupancy, you know, we, we have a little bit of, you know, measure there, but before that, I mean, there's really not much we can do, but I mean, is there a way to incorporate that on the early stages of building that you've gotta tie in, ensure that you don't have that negative?
Well, I think, I think that, I think that homeowner is responsible for his own water, but is that homeowner, we don't have anything saying that that homeowner is responsible for the neighbor's water.
Yeah, but it's, they're responsible for their water that's shedding and then if they, I mean, it.
If they're, yeah, if they're, if they're shedding, you know, to the neighbor's property, then yes, they're responsible for that water, yes, one hundred percent.
That's part of stormwater ordinance, we do cover that.
Yes.
But there's, there's always been this, Public Works is in charge of that, and the building department's in charge of that, but it's in part of our ordinance, stormwater ordinance, that, that you're supposed to have a swell between your properties to, to charge, and we don't, we don't recommend.
And that's where, if we can get that on the front end, when you're preparing to build, then that would alleviate a lot of the concerns we're seeing with those neighbors.
I mean, Citizen Street, yeah, Citizen, we got the same problem over there, you know, as, as, that's an example, everybody was draining on his property, he comes in.
Same thing around Seventh, I think we ran into that same issue too, so I mean, it's.
Yeah, yeah, but, you know, you, you know, they were holding ponds for the neighborhood and then when they come build, you know, which is their right to build and also to bring in, you know, some fill, so everybody's not running on them as well, you know. But I think if you look, and I don't wanna mention, I know Kenny's in here, but if you go out there and look at Admiral Lyles or subdivision they doing out there, you know, one thing about it, theirs, they have gone in there and created swells on every property line. And, and to me, when you live on the water, you, that's the way it should be, you shouldn't have ditches when you live on the water. As long as you put the swells in on your property line from street to the back, you know, so water can get out, you know, and leave it natural or whatever, is, is the perfect way to go, and then, then out that way, you get away with all your ditches and all.
I appreciate Kenny doing that and having the foresight to try to mitigate, I mean, I guess is there a way for us?
Yeah, you know, and that's one of the nightmares, you know, with the water, you know, after Katrina, of course, everybody came in and, you know, if, if the neighbor built up two feet, you know, the other guy built up three feet. He built up three, put four, five, six, eight foot, you know, and it was who could, who had the biggest mountain to build on out there, you know, and, and it's just, we forgot about drainage in those areas. Yeah, you know, they trying to come up with something on that, Kyle, as far as, you know, neighbors and all dumping and everything and, and then each homeowner take care of their own.
Ordinance four forty-two, our stormwater regulation, stormwater runoff development sites, so it should be addressed during construction, by the building department.
Yeah, I think Ricky's been going out checking.
Yeah, I mean, before, it's always, for years, it's been them, them folks to do it. Um, anything else, Mr. Lewis? Alright, um, look for project, look at project sheet, um, just cause I might ask earlier, last week or two, about having a workshop on our projects. Um, looking at that, looking at funding, I've kinda run some numbers, got my own spreadsheet, uh, we have a tremendous amount of city match funds that we have to come up with, right? And what, I think we're getting to the point of, uh, we had some money to do niceties, now we're getting back to the point of we got so many projects we have to do, so we gotta do the necessities now. I think we need to have a workshop to go through that list and figure out what's actually required to do and what's not required to do, and figure out we gonna fund those projects. Mike did a great job putting a spreadsheet together, I changed it today, put another couple things in there, trying to do some calculations, but right now, um, we got a tremendous amount of capital outlay from the city standpoint that we're looking at. Um, anybody come up with an idea, you wanna do it at council meeting, next council meeting, we wanna do a separate workshop to do it?
I'd workshop it one night.
Okay.
Yeah.
Somebody got a preference on a Tuesday workshop, I mean, what the hell? Tuesday week, um, twenty third, Tuesday the twenty-third, anybody got a, anything going on?
Twenty third of this month?
Twenty third, yes. The room available, Caitlin, do you know?
I think I'm good.
Aye.
Jason, you good?
Seven, uh, okay, we set up, set a, a project meeting on Tuesday, twenty-third of April at five thirty, and just kinda go through there, I think Reese has sent out a great spreadsheet, um, look at, look at it, trying to figure out projects, uh, we've got that funding mechanism for some of them. Again, and we had a lot of niceties, but, you know, these drainage projects, these sewer projects, um, are really a nec- necessity now. So some of the nice things are gonna have to wait again until we can get squared back up with our money.
Five thirty, Doug?
Five thirty Tuesday to twenty-third.
And, and with that, I know Heather's been working on, you know, anticipation, grant anticipation, loan and everything and all, you know, maybe we'll have some more information on that, um.
Probably not by Tuesday, cause I'm actually waiting on something from Mima who's waiting on FEMA, so I doubt very seriously we get that by Tuesday, but we can hope.
Miracles happen.
Yeah, I think y'all.
That would be a big one.
I think y'all had recommended, or somebody said that we wanted to do one for each project, instead of having a bucket of money.
The two major ones.
The two major projects.
Be direct, directly affiliated with that project, so that's the only project these funds can be used for. When FEMA turns, re, you know, returns the money to us, reimbursements, we would take that money and pay that note off as we get reimbursed.
So the way this works is you just have to think about your project worksheet or your grant agreement, depending on what situation we, we are in, you have to think about that as being your collateral. So typically, it, the way we do these things are each one are tied to that specific, either grant number or FEMA project worksheet. Um, the other benefit, every now and then, we can, we can kinda be creative and see if we can mount projects that are usually from the same funding source together, but that's when we rely on the financial advisor, because you may shoot yourself in a foot, in the foot there, because it might take a lot of banks out of. Basically, you'll raise it to a point that you limit yourself to the banks that are interested in bidding on that for you. So if you do a smaller bucket, you might have ten banks that submit, ten's a little large, let's say maybe five or six.
Right.
And if you up it, you might only have one, maybe two banks participate.
Only thing, so I know we discussed it last meeting, the only thing that concerns me is where, you know, we're, we're sitting there each month paying interest and that liberty of FEMA to pay us back, which we know can take a couple years, if not beyond, so, I mean, we're sitting there not paying anything on that note, paying interest.
We're told in documentation from D C M C, and D, D C M C, that the interest on a FEMA project like that can be reimbursed, when he sent documentation on it.
I think we'll send that out, dude.
That'd be cool.
I think we'll send that out where.
That's, that was one of our big questions, I, I, for the same reason, Scott.
But I'll also tell you, I don't want you to make decisions banking on that, cause we all know how FEMA works too. So everybody thinks that it is possible and we think that, that it can be done, but also don't want you to make a decision, you know, and think it's a hundred percent guaranteed.
I think the two that's on the table is a five percent match on our end, you know, so, you know, we're looking at total seven million dollars, you know, worth of projects for.
Three hundred fifty thousand.
Three hundred fifty thousand roughly would be our cost for the seven million dollars. I know we talked about where we're getting funds from and all, that's, that's one thing we've looked at as well, you know, I don't know, but I think we can use road and bridge funds for that if it came down to it, if we, if we needed that and all. And, and again, this is two good projects, these FEMA funds, you know.
So where do we determine that timeline, so we're, I mean, again, it's gonna be, is it, is it based on a cutoff or is it based on a perpetual, each, each month we'll be paying that interest, correct, of the amount of the loan, so how do we determine it's gonna be this amount?
So it, it depends on what we ultimately go with, if you go with, um, a short term note, which we probably would not do, if you go with a grant anticipation note, that typically works as a line of credit, so you're only drawing down what you are, so it, it's very specific to your mechanism. I would also tell you, um, something that I, you know, probably wouldn't have said five years ago, but I'll say now, if we would have taken some opportunities a few years ago when the market was much more in our favor for both interest rates and, um, contracting. We could've had all of these projects done, paid interest, and you probably still would've been a million dollars ahead of what you are. So construction prices and commodities keep going up, 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 and we're sitting here waiting because we're afraid to, to pay some interest, well, ultimately, our five percent is going up, 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 because all we've seen, our construction prices increase over the last five years, Jason?
Three really bad, yeah.
Yeah, three really bad, so, I mean, you know, I say that just because fortunately, I've, I've been sitting in this chair a while and I've seen us make decisions based off of interest, and I think some of those decisions have really shot us in the foot, um, in the long run. Decisions based off of interest, and I think some of those decisions have really shot us in the foot, um, in the long run.
And, and what makes us, so what Mr. Russo mentioned about that being reimbursed, that interest being reimbursable, what makes it, I mean, is that, is that ironclad? It's not ironclad, obviously, cause we said just be cautious on that.
It's in the law in D C M C.
It's provided that.
It is, it is.
So why would that change, or why would that not be the case?
It's FEMA.
Cause it's FEMA, and FEMA's not going to, I mean, they have told us, we've settled conference calls, we have heard them say, yes, this, these are reimbursable. These are reimbursable items, well, they, you know, so we're definitely gonna get reimbursed, these are reimbursable items.
Right.
We put that in writing, these are reimbursable items, we're telling you now, so. Quite frankly, Kyle, some of this, I'm covering my behind and their behinds, because we're being told that it's reimbursable, we're being told by our consultant that it's reimbursable. But until FEMA does it.
Get your money.
I'm not, and that, that's the same on, you know, every aspect of a, a FEMA project.
I just want to be cautious on making a decision based on that, it could be reimbursable, then we're on the hook, where, sorry, it is reimbursed, we're not gonna pay it, and then we're on the hook for that money.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Reimbursable doesn't mean they're gonna actually reimburse it.
Well, I get that, that's what I'm saying, we can't make a decision saying that, yeah, it's, you're gonna get that money back.
Yeah.
I think, you know, I think one of the things, you know, on these two projects especially, you know, when you. Possibility of three hundred, I don't know what interest would be on a seven million dollar loan for two years, you know. Say if it takes two years, if it takes one year, I don't know what that number is off the top of my head, cause I don't know what the interest rates are. But I think we're still looking at a pretty good deal to move forward on these two projects.
Well, these projects gotta be closed out before we get reimbursed, or will it be reimbursable as we go along?
I think no.
At, at closeout.
At closeout, so definitely gotta be.
Right.
I thought Mema.
They've told us different things, but you need to anticipate at closeout.
So we don't know neither, depends who, depends who looks at paperwork.
That's another thing, what we know now is Mema gives money to Mema and then assists with Mema.
A lot of our holes up in the past has been Mema.
Partial distributions, but Mema does not, so, I mean.
So do any of the give it off state?
It's been done.
And both of these projects should move pretty quickly.
Okay.
The road project.
We're talking about like ninety days.
Yeah, we, that's a timeframe this spring right now.
And it needs, it's getting worse every day, I mean.
And I would, I would also, just, Jason and I had this conversation either yesterday, today, we forget, or maybe last week. We've been holding these bids, and the contractors have been saying they would honor these bids for a long time now. So I just wanted to make sure we know is, at some point, they might say, hey, you know what, we gotta rebid this thing, I just wanna, you know. Be prepared that, we're talking like six months now.
Breakdown again to seven million dollars, so we're talking about seven million dollars for two projects, the harbor and then the Orchard Six. So what, what is the exact breakdown again on that for each project?
One's three point five, one's three point six, something like that, Jason?
Yeah, right around three and a half.
The reality, cash flow wise, I mean, we don't have the capacity to front three point five or seven. And still run our normal operations of just trying to use that cash on hand. It would eat up half of your checkbook.
Well, and I'm also gonna take this opportunity to say.
So it's either, guys, if y'all don't want to do the short-term thing, then give direction and say, tell FEMA, we're not doing the projects.
And if you had that much cash on hand, you would be criticized high and low for taxing too high.
Right.
So it's not, you know, people always, when you start talking about borrowing money or, you know, doing these grant anticipation notes, for some reason. It's, there's a few, I would say citizens that look at this as a negative thing, that's, that's not a negative thing. You, you know, you, you can't prepare yourself for. We never know what a storm's gonna bring, how bad it's gonna be, or what it's gonna knock around. So you can't sit on a twenty million dollar fund just waiting on a hurricane.
Right.
Without getting criticized pretty hard for too high of taxes.
All right, good discussion, all right, meeting's set for next Tuesday, April twenty-third.
Yeah.
Five-thirty P M. Uh, but the thing, is the comprehensive plan on the website?
Yes.
Okay, I, I don't know why the hell I'm trying to get you to email it to me, I just thought about that and I just want to make sure.
Yeah, there's a link that goes to P S L twenty forty-five or something like that.
With that Dropbox, and I'm, like, I couldn't get that Dropbox.
Yeah, but if I need to put it on, download it to a jump drive for you.
All right, um, culvert moratorium, is that still in effect, or how are we getting people to put culverts in their ditches in front of the house? I got a request for one, and I, I actually don't remember what the hell, what the heck we're.
I think we did it, but we couldn't do the whole ditch.
Right, but it's, so we just gotta have an engineer, engineer plant for.
I know Ronnie and him goes out and they'll talk with Jason and him to decide.
So they just need to contact Public Works to get a permit and to get the ball rolling.
Is it one culvert or the?
Um, probably two, one sixty-nine, right there by Chuck's, across the street from Chuck, we're right next to Chuck Benvenuti, actually, upstream, Dunbar Side.
What, and didn't we discuss, uh, I, I, I remember, no, no, but I remember us discussing, we're having the engineers, uh, stamp plans, but then that could be a very costly venture for the homeowner, then we talked about. Can, you know, Jason looking at the review for.
If just one culvert like that and everything, then Ronnie will go out and look at that.
Okay.
And, and size.
I didn't mean to throw you under Jason, I just remembered, I'm not.
If he's got question, then he'll, he'll get a hold with Jason and all.
Okay, okay. So they don't necessarily have to get, go out and get a structural engineer and get these plans, they can just go through the process and making sure it's compliant with Ronnie and then Jason?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Only last thing, um, there was a blue slingshot parked in front of Pearl Hotel for, over the weekend, a few days, um, for rent.
That three-wheeled thing?
Yeah.
Gone.
I was gonna say, I, I know Jeremy was dealing with that last week, I don't know when it left, but I know that's been.
Thank you. Yeah, whatever it is.
Gone.
Cool, thank you.
Business out of the kill, that's the day and.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, I understand it, it's gonna let it rule, so. All right, um, public forum, Mr. Bobby Heinrich. I think he left.
Yeah, I think Bobby was here for Shields.
Mr. Michael Reeves.
Michael Reeves, one thirty-four Felicity Street. Uh, I have an interesting little tidbit of information you might be interested in. Uh, in just, uh, reviewing the, uh, consent agenda, there was the. Plat for the fair got lost in there that was, uh, relates to condominium development in it, but it's. It was, the plot of the site was, uh, drawn from something in the past. Uh, and it sparked a, uh, a conversation I had with Jimmy, Jimmy Ladner, a year, year or more, two ago. Uh, concerning, I asked him if he knew how many handicap. Vehicles were being registered in the state. Uh, as a percentage to the total number, and at the time, he didn't know, but he went and. Talked with the state person and found out that the percentage of handicap vehicles. Cars being registered is in the range of twenty to thirty percent. Uh, and, and just looking at that plat, uh. It basically had no handicap parking indicated on, and I understand that plat was for another purpose, but. Uh, where they had indicated handicap parking on that plat. It wouldn't be big enough for the requirements of handicap parking anyway, so, uh, they could either. Loot, potentially lose a parking spot in there, uh, in order to make two. Real handicap spots in there, so there's an, has an issue with that, and I just thought it was interesting. To, that the community to be aware that, you know, twenty to thirty percent of the cars. Are, have handicap licenses and have potentially handicap people and. We are usually, uh, minimizing. Uh, minimizing that in our review of, of projects and things like that.
We do have, we do have guidance on those, um, as far as handicap spots, they're required to have two. Um, there are ten, there are, those spots are ten by twenty spots, um, so they will.
Not big enough for a handicap spot.
Handicap spots need to be thirteen foot wide, so three to, two to the spots, make, makes you three spots will be twenty-six feet. Which would provide for two handicap spots, which was denoted on the, um, the site plan, but yes, it's not in. Talked to city about that, that will be part of the temporary C O, uh, to make sure those are identified, um, so that, that is, could be cleared up.
Yeah, well, I was just curious to let you know that.
Yeah, we did, we did look at it.
It would seem like an extremely high amount for, you know, handicap, and there are some other issues. With handicap accessibility into that building, but. The Building Department will have to deal with the owners on that particular issue.
All right, thank you.
Uh, I was gonna, maybe comment on the, on the, uh. Other project for the, uh, courthouse thing, I, I mean, the Court Street renovation, I. Would just surprise the interest in seeing how that progressing along, it's, it's satisfy my curiosity, it's how it's going.
Yep.
Uh, because as an architect, I find it very unusual to request a fifty percent. You know, fee and not seeing anything for it.
Yep. Yep. We get, we got a report on that, that's what I asked him for, a fifty percent payment.
Yeah, they going out for advertisements, I think, next week.
Okay.
But, but.
So that's the finalized.
The goal is that next meeting to be coming to y'all for motion advertise.
So the design is, the design is complete.
Some alternate bids as well to see where, how far the money will go.
Okay.
Well, about that time, it'll be interesting to see what they got done.
Yep.
It was strange to me that they, you know, they weren't giving an estimate of bid until they had everything finished. Usually that's not the way an architect firm would handle it, but anyway, I'll be interested to see what they do.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Administration with Ronnie met with, uh, Machado Potato last, last week. In our office, finalizing that kind of stuff, and also checking off a few things that our Public Works Department was able to start initiating and doing their own, specifically several things inside, inside the building. Um, such as painting it, we have floors, new floors coming, those type of things, but, um, the advertisement, our intention is to bring that to y'all at next meeting.
All right, uh, Mr. Henry Scott. Joanne Noel, I think she spoke on State Street, Ms. Williams, five hundred Sycamore Street. Mr. Michael Garvin. Seven fifty-five Cherry Hill Diamond Head.
I think that's Glavin, they're on the.
All good, yes, yes, y'all good, hey, just, just hang, just hang out back there, we're good. Um, all right, any, it's a public forum, that's it, thank you. Catch up here, engineers report, Mr. Jason.
All right, thank you, we have four items tonight that we were asking, uh, for your approval. Um. So the first one is for the. Fire Drive Sidewalk Project, um, we want to, uh, accept our recommendation to award the contract to bottom to top there with a little bidder. And authorize mayor to execute all the contract document, um, now this did say pending the, uh, funding, Mike Reese, I don't know if you've got the information from Gulf Regional.
No, they sent out, we requested the additional funds, they have to do a public notice period. Today, they actually sent the board, including myself, the mayor, all the other kind of people around the coast that are on that board. Um, an electronic vote, asking them to approve, basically a reallocation, uh, of moving whatever the excess funds were from, uh, our. Old Spanish Trail project into the buyer's street project, so we can keep moving on that. And then in the future, when Old Spanish Trail comes up, and again, talking about projects, we can request additional funds at that time for that project.
That's the ultimate trail lighting.
Lighting.
Lighting, yeah.
All right, make, um, motion to accept, uh, city engineer recommendation award to buyer drive sidewalk improvement project to lowest and best bidder, bottom to top LLC, and authorize the mayor to execute. Execute, execute all construction related documents contingent upon additional funds being obligated by M dot G R P C.
Motion.
Motion Mr. Salvo.
Second.
Second, Mr. Hoffman, any further discussion? I would like further discussion, say we started this project in two thousand sixteen. And it's four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars just to put sidewalks on buyer drive.
I thought it's been longer than that, so.
Is that crazy? That is ridiculous, thank y'all for getting it pushed forward.
There's a lot of drainage work going on with that.
There's a lot, lot of culverts, there's a lot of culverts.
Yeah.
Yep. All right, any further discussions, vote to motion.
All right, all right.
All right, motion passes four zero. All right, next, thank you.
Thank you. Next item is for Washington Street, uh, this is a sidewalk project that would connect, uh, from Old Spanish Trail to St. Francis. Uh, this project actually came in under the estimate.
Yes.
Um, and so we're recommending award to bottom to top and to authorize mayor to execute all construction related documents.
I can't believe Mr. Jeffrey's not here to make the motion.
I've got to say, y'all want to wait till Jeffrey's here?
I was hoping he'd be here tonight.
I know, right?
I think he'd like to.
This is another.
You don't, he don't think he wants us to wait on it?
This is another two thousand sixteen project we was approved for.
Yeah. All right, any motion accept, engineers recommendation award to Washington Street Sidewalk Improvement Project, the lowest and best bidder, bottom to top LLC, and authorize the mayor to execute all construction related documents.
I'll make a motion.
Motion, Mr. Hoffman.
Second.
Second, Mr. Salvo, any further discussions, vote to motion.
All right, all right.
All right, motion passes four zero.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, third item is the pickleball court, uh, motion authorize the mayor to execute the contract with Moran Hauling, I did include those contracts, uh, in our report. Right?
Did you make sure you put that clause, the times of the essence in there, cause that's great, I didn't see.
I think I get more questions on pickleball than.
Yeah.
Any other.
They got like a hundred days.
An agreement we got, this, it's incomplete, but I mean, I guess it's fine, right?
Yeah, I think it'll just need to be filled out, I didn't have the city's name up on the top part of it.
What you who was for? Where are we funding this from? I don't remember.
Leave them.
That was coming through bond fund too.
Bond funds.
Okay, I was, I looked for it.
Fire Department and that.
It's gonna be pretty close.
You got about a half million bond.
I was looking for that and I couldn't find it.
We got four hundred fifty thousand, six hundred and ten dollars, I think it is now.
Okay, all right.
We just spent it tonight.
Yeah, I know, right? All right, motion approved of, of, of Department of Health, that's their own one. Motion to authorize mayor to execute contracts with Moran Hauling for the construction of the pickleball courts.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Hoffman.
Second.
Second, Mr. Salvo, any further discussion, vote to motion.
All right.
All right.
All right, motion passes four zero.
All right, thank you for that, the final, uh, action item, this is for, uh, a resolution for the low interest loom, uh, so this is a, a submittal that we turned in. Uh, the ranking form that's been turned in to Department of Health for two projects, for an elevated tank, that we're low on our storage capacity. And then also for water line improvements throughout the city, that we want to change out any line that's four inches or smaller. Um, that we have adequate pressure, adequate flow, things like that. Um, this is one of those projects where, um, it's a potential for a hundred percent forgiveness, just like the water well. Uh, but we have to submit the information, see how we stack up against other water projects throughout the state, and then they'll give us a ranking form probably around September. Um, and then let us know if we're gonna be, you know, in that hundred percent forgiveness or not, so this is just the, uh, the resolution authorizing us to submit that, that document date.
Start the process for the.
Right.
New tank, okay.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion, Mr. Hoffman.
Second.
Second, Mr. Salvo.
Yeah, discussion, Jason, what was the, what was the cost of that, was the total estimation?
So the, the tank, I believe we had.
Two and a half?
Two and a half million for the tank, um, which is, should be enough, we just bid a project for Port Bian Bill and that five hundred thousand gallon tank came in just under two million. Um, and then for the water improvements, it was around five million throughout the city.
And this is a reimbursement, so we'd have to come up with that again.
Right. But this is one, we won't know about this until.
That's the time of time line.
Yeah, September or November of this year. Yeah.
We, we did the same process with the water well last year, where we submitted it this time of year, and then we find out around September. And again, the council at that time can say, you know, it's not forgivable, for example, y'all can say, stop the project.
And what, if it, if it is, then what is the timeline actually getting that and getting that hit, uh, getting the work done, I mean, we're looking at. Pretty lengthy process, I'd imagine.
Yeah, it is, uh, it's a lot of work to get the, um, the design for the water improvements, particularly since it's citywide. Um, so even, I would say probably at least a year or more, once you find out if you're on the hundred percent forgiveness list, um, at least a year before you'd even be under construction.
Yeah, we're probably.
So it's probably two years out.
Twenty-five, twenty, in twenty-five, twenty-six maybe, before we get these projects going.
Okay.
If, if it becomes forgivable, so just, it's not guaranteed.
Any more discussion, vote to motion.
All right, all right.
All right, motion passes four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Um, anything else, Mr. Jason?
Just an update on Santa Lane, as, uh, I think Mr. Reese had mentioned earlier, we took bids today, we had six bids, uh, three of them were within three thousand dollars of each other. Uh, and so we're evaluating those bids right now, the, the second, first and second. and so we're evaluating those bids right now, the, the second, first and second bidder were about nine hundred dollars apart, uh, so we're looking at those, be sure that all the numbers look good, and then we'll make a recommendation at the next.
And Jason, speaking of water spark, my question on this, I know we discussed it a month or so ago, but the federal push to make sure our lines that are, what, built before eighty-four, eighty-seven?
The lead.
The lead.
Yes.
Where do we stand on that?
Yeah, um, I think I, thought I put that in here, but let me see if, uh, if I included it. Yeah, so, um, we're working with Ronnie and the, uh, utilities department to get a list of all your water customers, and then we can start filtering those out as far as when, like subdivisions were, were brought online. Uh, the inventory is due, uh, which is the first phase, that inventory is due October this year. And so, we're, we're working towards that, there won't be any, uh, field work per se done before that timeframe, this is just a documentation gathering process, we try to eliminate the ones that we know were built after nineteen eighty-eight, or, you know, were, were repaired after Katrina, um, and then at that point, that gets turned over to the Department of Health, and then, uh, they will go through and see what the costs are gonna be, we'll go through the same process on those, it'll be a loan, but it'll also be potential for a hundred percent forgiveness, so I have to go through this whole process again with them to submit, once we know about how many surface lines we have.
So, it would be, it would be a forgivable loan for the city we got to.
That's what they're telling us now, but it, they're very short on information, the deadlines keep getting pushed, so, um, that's what we know as of today.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
I'm Mr. Russo.
A is motion to approve based on Los Docking Claims twenty-four dash oh-two-one dated April sixteen, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of two million six hundred eighteen thousand five one five point ninety.
Damn, you spent a lot of money this month.
It's a big one compared to our, some of our previous ones recently.
Yeah, three hundred thousand last month.
A lot of it is moving money.
Yeah.
In a fund transfer.
Yep, I had them, Mr. Russo, do me some A B Cs on some of that. Lot of money moving around.
You get the X Y Z?
Oh, no, I didn't get that far, still in grammar school and all that, um.
You only went from A through D on that one, four items.
Yeah, I went, I got, I had a bunch of questions, Mr. Russo, got them all answered, um, anybody else had any questions on the docket? Any motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Hoffman.
Second.
Second, Mr. Salvo, any discussion, vote to motion?
Alright.
Alright.
Alright, motion passes four zero.
Uh, B is motion to approve based on Los Docking Claims twenty-four dash zero-two-two special dated April sixteen, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of three hundred sixty-six thousand four eighty-eight point two-five.
Mike, just refresh me on, what's the, the transfer from municipal reserve to auditor, a hundred thousand, that's, refresh me on that.
Three oh five auditor.
Line out them.
To be honest with you, I don't know off the top of my head on that one today, that was done today, it's, uh, added, uh, I don't wanna give you, I don't know off the top of my head, I don't wanna speak to it.
Is it on the list with the?
It's moving from municipal reserve to the, you know.
Pearl auditors last year, remember how they told us we had transfer money, how we used to take it from here and just pay the bills and come back there, now, now we had to go from municipal reserve to the other account, and we gotta put it back into that account and transfer it back to where it came from, it's a four step process now.
So, what is three oh five, what count is that? So, then it's going back to municipal reserve from there?
From municipal reserve to that.
But it's gotta go. Where's it going, where's it ending up?
It's going from municipal reserve.
I don't have it.
It's transferred from municipal reserve to three, account three oh five, or fund three oh five.
That's what I'm doing.
Yeah.
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 Capital Projects Fund.
Capital Projects, yeah, going back to Capital Projects from the reserve.
So, basically with the auditors, we were using our municipal reserve fund to pay bills to, like, engineers and contractors, and that was one thing they told us, we shouldn't be using it, because that's really a Capital Projects Fund. So, get that kind of expenditure out of your municipal reserve and put it into Capital Projects Fund, and that came out of last year's audit. Otherwise, they were gonna write us out, and they did, that was more of a warning.
So, we're taking it, so it's gonna be staying in three oh five, which is Capital Projects?
Correct.
Was it originally there?
No, it's moving to.
No, but where, where was it originally, I mean, because we're moving it back, right, we're moving it back.
Moving it back to that.
You moved it from.
So, it was originally, it was originally there and taken out, put in the reserve?
It was a transfer.
It's a transfer, not a loan, so that's putting it back in that account.
To be able to pay for those bills.
That's true, it'll be back in that fund.
Alright.
Alright, any more discussion, vote to motion?
Alright. Did we have a motion on it?
Did we make a motion?
I don't think we made a motion, do we?
I think we made a motion for the first one.
Back up, let me read, I'm reading ahead here.
But I'll give you a motion for that.
Uh, motion to Docking Claims twenty-four dash zero-two-two special dated April sixteen, two thousand twenty-four, in amount of three hundred sixty-six thousand four eighty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Salvo, second. Mr. Hoffman, any discussion, vote to motion?
Alright.
Alright.
Alright, motion passes four zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda, um, I'd like to remove item H.
Who?
About item H.
H.
That's just the, the boardwalk project, we'll talk about that separately. I think that's gonna be part of our project discussions. Um, is anything else on here, is it, um, anybody got any questions on? Any motion to approve the consent agenda, A through W?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Hoffman.
Minus item H.
Second.
Second, Mr. Salvo, any further discussion, vote to motion?
Alright.
Alright.
Alright, motion passes four zero. Item H, it has to remove that, Mr. Mayor, I think we need to have that discussion on our project workshop, um, what we're gonna do with this project, as far as funding, and, um, where we're gonna, where we're gonna fund it from, and how we're gonna fund it. So, we'll keep that out, and, uh, talk about that as far as our project list, anybody got any problems with that?
Mr. Steel, on that one, do you wanna table it?
Yeah, just table it.
For your next meeting, and, like, what I'm gonna, the question is, do you wanna table it for the first meeting in May?
That'd be good, thank you.
And then not have, just, I was gonna get to, do you wanna have a recess meeting for your next, for that, we call it a workshop?
Yeah.
Because you can't vote on anything.
Right.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, minutes approval, April second. I don't think I had any changes, nope, no changes. Motion to minutes approve.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Hoffman.
Second.
Second, Mr. Salvo, any discussions, vote to motion?
Alright.
Alright.
Alright, motion passes four zero, um, attorneys report.
All of my items have been discussed.
Do, um, Heather, do we need to go, do we need to discuss, I know the city, I think last meeting we discussed city's been served on the petition, do we need to go into that session and discuss that?
I don't have anything to update with you guys on that, other than we are working on a response or what that may look like, so unless.
Okay, that's what I was.
If I don't have anything.
Okay, that's what I was wanting to find out, what the response is, okay.
What y'all got, what y'all on? Oh, signed, yes, yeah, we have some here, we can sign, I'm gonna sign them as soon as the meeting's over with.
And actually, Mr. Alston, we'll probably pick them up tomorrow, because we've got three of them, and I think Jeremy also has to sign all of them, so, yeah, we'll get them all signed tomorrow.
I'll put my John, John Hancock on them before we leave. Um, assignments, uh, announced May April twenty-fourth, blood donation at City Hall. Um, in other than that, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Hoffman. Second, Mr. Salvo, all in favor? Alright, motion passes four zero.
That was out of habit.
Yeah.